I'm the Blood Legion Super Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, uh, we need approval of the minutes from the regular council meeting on Tuesday, March 9.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular council meeting minutes from March 9.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the regular council meeting held on March 9. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time. All right, uh, agree on the agenda, um, we have Darren tonight, we've moved him up in the past to be right after the approval of the minutes. Is that something that we all can agree upon? Is that okay with everybody?
Approval of bills?
Yes, approval of the bills, sorry, after the approval of the bills. Sound good?
I agree.
That sounds good to me.
All right. All right, um, let's move on to the approval of the bills.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
My second.
We have a motion to approve the bills and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time. Bills are approved. Darren Hunt from the House of Insurance. Thank you. You are first.
Where do you want me to present them right here, is that what you're going to do?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah. Well, um, thank you again for having me and, um, just a brief recap of last year in the insurance world, um, you know, we had, you know, we had too many issues come up with the city, um, as far as claims, we had a couple of minor things that Chris and I are working through. But other than that, um, no really big claims or anything like that. And, um, if you look at the, um, the packet that I sent you, um, our increase for the year is, uh, $1,600. Um, in reality, we have an inflation guard on some of our property limits of about 4%. So in reality, that's, uh, really not even an increase in premium when you factor in our property, um, coverages are going up by 4% on most of our buildings. Um, I always put in there what we paid in 2013, uh, just to kind of give you a realistic approach of what your premiums have done over the last nine years. And, um, as you can see, over the last nine years, um, the premiums have gone up by $10,000. But in reality, our building inflation guards have gone up by quite a bit more than that because we've had in those times, two different appraisals done by the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust, uh, to look at the building coverages that we have with the city. Uh, if you want, you can turn to page three and you'll see the premium breakout, how it breaks out with each line of insurance. Um, the majority of your insurance cost, $41,000 of the $72,000, is coming on insuring your property, which rightfully so, as you look through the different building coverages that we have, as you can see, we insure a lot of property for the city of the center. Um, the only, one of the only main drivers of losses that can really kind of hurt you by the more claims you turn in would be your liability. Uh, but that premium is fairly small, and we're sitting at about $17,000 for municipal liability. And then of course, you can see the auto physical damage and automobile liability pricing there as well. Uh, one of the claims that we always kind of have once in a while is these equipment breakdown claims with the different pumps and things that we have insured throughout the city. Um, I didn't think we even had one last year, Kurt, no, so that was good, but you do pay a little bit of premium for that at $3,200. Everything, of course, is subject to the $1,000 deductible. As I always recommend in the past, each of the council members, um, take a look at the, um, vehicles that we have scheduled, uh, take a look at the building coverages we have scheduled. I know every now and then someone will reach out to me, a specific building or something, think we may be underinsured or maybe overinsured, and we have made changes based on those recommendations, so always feel free to reach out to me if you see anything in discrepancy on any of those. Um, if we go back, we need to look at, um, the next item would be the workers' compensation. That policy always renewed in, um, excuse me, October. Uh, that's one of the lines of insurance where we're probably seeing a little bit more increase in premium, and in reality, um, that's a subject of your payroll, as payrolls go up, uh, so will work comp premiums. Um, you know, our experience modification that the state of Minnesota assigns for our risk rating is still sitting very good at .78. So that means we're not having many, uh, injuries for our, um, city employees, and that's a good thing. So you are seeing a little bit more of an increase there, but that's just the overall nature of, of the game. You know, one thing to keep in mind with work comp, you know, medical inflation averages anywhere from 4% to 7% any given year. Um, some experts will say 7%, some will say closer to 4 or 5, it depends who you talk to. Well, workers' comp is strictly derived from medical costs. Of course, you have your loss of wages in there built in as well, but the cost of medical care. So as medical care continues to increase, your workers' comp premiums are going to increase there as well.
Got a good question for you there. So any of that increase, is that due to COVID work-related?
No, right now, and this is a battle in the legislature, is, um, COVID covered under a work comp-related claim? You know, if I, if I'm working along you, Colin, and I pass you COVID right now, you're not going to receive work comp benefits. Depending on how that happens with the legislature plays off, that could be a different story.
So how do you, so how would an employee make that claim if they said, "I, I have COVID"? It's, it's currently, it's on the work comp, right?
No, no.
No, it's not.
That would be, uh, that would be, well, there's multiple reasons, multiple things, uh, if an employee has COVID, I think the federal government is paying X amount of days for that time off to that entity. I don't know how that relates to government, Chris, do you know?
Not off the top of my head.
Yeah, but that's how it would relate there.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep, in reality, work comp, for the most part, is going to be accidents, injuries.
Got it.
Um, again, you've got your list of locations that we've insured for all the buildings, um, actually, it's a 3% inflation deductible. The one thing that we've, every, I, I would say we probably discussed this 10 years ago, and since most of you haven't been here for 10 years, it comes up once in a while, and that is the pool itself, not the bathing house, but just the pool. What would happen if the pool were to be damaged by a covered claim? First of all, could the pool actually be damaged by a covered claim? That'd be such things as wind, fire, you know, any type of earth movement's not going to be covered. But, uh, one, a couple of examples we thought of is a building actually from the fairgrounds get blown into the pool. You know, we're going to have some cleanup out of that pool and maybe something gets damaged. We do have the pumps alongside the bathing house coverage, but the pool itself is not covered. And there would be an additional cost to insure. Um, but then again, uh, League of Minnesota Cities also realizes that there's not many things that can happen to a pool that would be covered anyways, especially because our pool is basically all cement. But we do have the pumps insured, so we would have that equipment breakdown coverage on that, but the pool itself. So it's just something to think about, and if you want, I can work with Chris more. It, you know, it's, it's going to be an item where you probably pay, I don't know, depending on the amount of coverage we want, a couple thousand dollars a year in premium for something like that. But I just want to know, you don't really have to make a decision, but what are you guys' thoughts? We haven't insured it in the past.
I'd, I'd say personally, for how old it is, it would probably be safe not to do that right, right now. I don't know, uh, if you're talking about the damage to it itself, I don't, I don't, I can't see, I, I mean, you're talking, you have to have tornadoes, which could happen, blowing everything over into it, I, I don't see that. I don't know, any, any other thoughts?
So if a tornado did come and damage it, we wouldn't be covered currently?
The pool itself.
The pool itself.
But the bathing house would be, the pumps? And I don't know if a tornado necessarily could damage it, I don't know, what do you guys think?
You're insuring a hole in the ground.
Yeah, right.
Gutters, pumps.
You know, you got a tornado takes a car and throws it on top of the pool and cracks the foundation.
Could damage the gutters around the pool, yeah.
I think we should roll the dice and not do it.
We've been doing it for probably 50 years.
It'll happen this, it'll happen this spring, Bob.
A tornado comes through and damages it will, bigger problems.
Yeah. I think we're, we're good.
Yeah, okay. Um, again, um, your auto and build coverages, uh, the new garbage truck, um, you guys get a break this year because it was added midterm, meaning after the renewal date, so you get a whole three-year premium on that. Um, we did add three new vehicles last year, so those pickups you bought two years ago were finally added on this year. Um, in reality, your auto premium really didn't go up much by having a couple of new vehicles, so that was good. Um, the new police car was purchased, I believe, and added right before the renewal this year, Bob, so that one may be tapped on. Uh, the municipal liability, item number four, this is an action item that we need to do every year. Um, in the past, we carried $2 million of liability coverage in case somebody, uh, feels a need to sue the city and the courts find that we are negligent, the league will pay up to $2 million, uh, for that, for those all expenses. Um, if we choose to, the Minnesota State statute basically says that the municipality can't be sued for more than $500,000. But if we waive that statute, then they can sue us up to $2 million or more, depending on the coverages we select. Actually, Jason, you'll know this, they can sue us for every month they want.
They can, they could sink a hundred million.
Yeah. Um, but we're choosing limits of $2 million, we've done that in the past. So what we need is an action, uh, a council resolution or a vote, basically, to say that we're going to waive the statutory limits set forth by the state of Minnesota and select the $2 million option. Any questions on that?
No, we need that now?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to waive the statutory limit amount to $2 million for this fiscal year. Does that make sense, or this current year?
We have a motion, we need a second.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to waive the, uh, waive the statutory liability coverage for this year. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same time.
Quick question before you continue, Darren, I forgot to ask. Going back to the pool, we had put in a claim, do you know?
Yeah, for the flooring. So we just had a response from the adjuster, um, one, I'm, I'm, I don't necessarily agree with her on this, um, in its regards to the hand sanitizer being declared a polluted, flutin'. Um, and they're saying that because it was a flutin', it has special coverages, that says that the expenses for the flutin' cleanup need to incur within the first 90 days. We could go round and round with her on that, and Jason could probably be a big resource, and I could, uh, but the biggest point to that is they figured out to fix that area where the sanitizer was spilled on would probably only cost a little over $1,000, is what that estimate came in at. Now, if we redid the whole bathhouse, it would be, I think, $12,000. But the insurance is only going to hold on the damaged portion, which is slightly over $1,000.
And what is our?
And we, and we have $1,000.
So that's just one of those things where the fortune's going to fall relatively comfortable right now, even if we did bite up the flutin' issue.
The bottom line is they're not going to redo the whole floor in the pool.
Yeah.
She told us that the first minute she was there. Because she walked through it and said, she walked all the way through it and I walked with her. She said that it was actually in pretty nice shape, she's seen a lot worse ones, so. She said, "I can't see any situ-, or, you know, circumstance or situation where we would pay for the, inside those locker rooms when it didn't have anything to do with the outside damage there right in front," so. They kind of, uh, we measured from the doorway of each of the two locker rooms, if you will, that front part of it, and that's where she's coming up with, it would cost a little over $1,000 to do, redo that, and our deductible is $1,000 anyway, so we just have to decide if we still want to do it and...
If you're going to do the hand sanitizer again this year, you might as well just leave it.
Yes.
That's a must.
Um, one more final thing is, um, you noticed the dividend program, uh, that's a great news. Um, last December, Chris, you probably received a check for almost $7,000. Um, and, um, actually, $6,993, which is an increase of over $3,900 from last year on the dividend. And basically, the dividend is, League of Minnesota Cities, they've collected too much premium for the claims they paid out the previous year, so you're getting a little bit return of that back. We've seen that dividend go highs $12,000 before. So that's a good sign that it's kind of going up again, and, um, you know, they're rewarding the cities, uh, back with that, with that.
Quick question on that, so can I assume that as there's more, let's say, tornadoes or wind or damage that happens throughout Minnesota, conversely, that dividend will probably go down because they're paying out more? So the less storms and...
And liability claims.
Okay.
Yeah?
So we should hope for less storms and less craziness?
Yes.
Perfect, your second.
Want to underline the craziness part?
Thanks, Darren.
Yeah, thank you, everybody. And as always, call me or email me with any specific questions on this one.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Darren.
Thanks, Darren.
Yep, thanks.
Have a good night. All right. On to the reports from, uh, department reports, EDA, Mr. Collins, Chris. Sorry.
We did finally have an EDA meeting, and, uh, I did put the, um, a copy of the unapproved minutes in the packet here. So you can see the different things that we did talk about on there, um, lots of different things for me to do, but there's one thing on here that for you guys to do tonight. Um, we, the EDA did consider and approve a $5,000 microloan, uh, for Roadrunner Sales, which is, uh, Kevin, Sheila, and Huber are going to start up a new business, uh, and they're going to run out of the south side of the Roadrunner building there, um, and they're going to house and sell Ice House slash, the Ice House/RV dealership, and they'd be located inside the, uh, Roadrunner Repair Business site there. Um, they're requesting the $5,000 microloan for startup costs, interior and exterior facade renovations, uh, some site prep, including the security measures they would put up. Um, they probably would have some, uh, ice houses on hand that they would put on the north side of that building there, but they'd want to put a fence up around it there. Um, the, and as I mentioned, the EDA board did approve that unanimously to give them the $5,000 microloan, which is a, a five-year interest-free loan for them, uh, no interest.
Any questions?
I've got one for Chris. Did you guys discuss, or able to discuss, uh, maybe waiving those loans?
Okay, one thing at a time.
Oh, I thought, I thought you were done.
We have to consider this $5,000.
The SASEA voted and approved it.
Yeah, we got to vote on this, approve it for Roadrunner.
I'll make, sorry to interrupt. I'll make a motion to approve the $5,000 microloan for Roadrunner Sales.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for the $5,000 microloan, uh, request for Roadrunner Sales and Services LLC. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same time?
Approved.
Chris, do you need me to draft that? Or is that already done?
The loan, that, I think I have, yeah, I think you gave me all that stuff already, and so...
So you got it, okay.
Yeah, if I need to, I'll, I'll look you up.
Sounds good.
All right, you have a question now.
Okay.
You got it.
Um, would you guys be able to discuss, um, those COVID loans that we gave out to the businesses in town to grant?
They did, they did discuss that down below under Miss Lanius, it said, uh, they did discuss it, and, uh, their, their, this, at the time, decision was yes, recipients must pay back those loans exactly as the EDA set them up to be and advertised them, to be that, and they went so far as to say this was a loan, not a grant.
The EDA made, made, made it known that this was a, obviously, a loan, not a grant. They were very low interest, and to be able to get a loan for what we gave out, you wouldn't have been able to find that anywhere else, so.
Right, did we get this money from the federal government or was it city money?
This is in the EDA account.
This is city money?
This is city money, yes. All right, any more questions for Mr. Collins? All right, thank you, Chris. Uh, planning its zoning, Corey.
Hello, Mayor and Council.
Hello, Corey.
Um, I don't have anything to report. We've had kind of a slow spring with discussions of, of stuff. I usually take that as a, the, the, the slow discussions isn't always good, but there's, uh, had a lot of requests for, for zoning issues, for variances, for CPs. A lot of times, I take that as a good, uh, situation that there's no issues, there's no problems, so. I don't have much to report, unless you've got any questions for me.
Anybody else? Thanks, Corey.
Thank you.
All right, liquor store report, Brad.
Oh, there, Mr. Hartmeyer, Council, and the rest of you. Thought spring was here, but it's a little chilly, isn't it? All right, so March 2021 sales, we had a total of $90,530.69 compared to last March at $85,897.22. Um, our bar sales were up, uh, about $7,800, off sale was down about $3,200. So all in all, we were up $4,633.47. I guess as across the board, obviously, the bar sales should be up just because, uh, last March, we were closed on the 17th through the rest of the month, and this year, we were open the entire month just with, uh, some restricted hours. Um, and off sale, obviously, down in here, which doesn't worry me whatsoever, just because last year was kind of a a worrisome time that people blocked up, so. But overall, sales are kind of getting close to par for the bar, um, and, uh, off sales still holding, uh, an above-average sales, that's good there. Uh, so gross profit for the month, um, we had 40.08% and on the food was 37.54%. Uh, our year-to-date revenues, we are up $26,209.13, and our expenses are up $16,947.1 cent. Um, and just on that expense side of things, liquor purchases are up about $19,000, um, and obviously, then, some of the other areas are down here and there, just to get us to the point of about $17,000. And as a recap for the month of March, um, we had a successful St. Patrick's Day festivities in town. Um, I wouldn't call it the norm, but, uh, it was great to see something relatively close to it. A lot of people, a lot of fun, no issues, no complaints, so I thought that was a very well-run event for the year. We had a pepper tournament, dart tournament, and both of those went very well. Again, people are, are happy to see things starting to happen in the world again. Um, and then looking forward here to April, um, obviously, just, you know, hoping for spring to, to come back to light here and some warmer weather. Um, and we're hoping to get one more pepper tournament in, uh, this month before spring really hits and people start heading back to work, so. Kind of wraps this up for the last month. Questions?
Any questions for Brad? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Police Department, Mr. Barr.
Police activity for the month of March, we had nine arrests, 36 complaints, 71 other activities, 116 total calls or incidents handled, 3,231 miles were patrolled. Uh, comparison to last year, last year, Paul, we were at 498, we're at 368 this year, we're down about 26%. Um, miles patrolled last year, we were at 8,472, this year, we're at 9,280, we're up about 10%. Couple different things, uh, I was contacted, uh, actually, Chris was contacted, uh, regarding the church on, uh, Cordova Avenue, again, we're having issues with them with the music during their church services. They have actually a live band, um, so I sent them a letter, uh, basically with the copy of our, uh, July, uh, 2015 meeting we had when they were still at Lexington, reminding them that 9:00 PM was our thing, and, uh, actually, today, I had gotten one of the, I had sent it to the church and to, uh, one of the care, care of people that's on the Beacon website, and actually, the one from the church came back, so they must not take mail at the church, um, but I called the gale to make sure that she actually received my copy, and she said she had, and they have addressed it, so, um, hopefully, we'll get no more complaints. I'm trying to spear it off, because last year, we had two complaints in November, one in December, and we just had one now here in March, so I just, I, I don't want to get into this rigmarole of us having to show up every time they have a church service there. Uh, let's see, this week is the beer weather week. Uh, on Thursday, the 15th, we'll have the tornado drills at 1:45 and 6:45. Just a kind of reminder to everyone that, uh, the siren system is an outdoor warning system. It's not intended necessarily to be heard indoors, and people should, uh, be listening to their radios and, and TV for, you know, I can all clear, because there's no siren that's going to, um, blow that says it's all clear. Uh, just one other thing, I, we had a part-time officer that got hired by Cannon Falls, so we're down one. I rehired Jason Squires, uh, he had worked here and left, uh, in 2017, and he asked if he could can, uh, work here, and I said, "Yeah, that'd be fine," so he'd be starting here, I think, next week, he'll be one of his first shifts. Um, I do have one of the other, uh, part-time officers getting backgrounded again by two different agencies, so we'll see if he gets hired somewhere, so I still may end up having to hire more part-time. So, uh, we did have some issue with, uh, the squad car, uh, someone had ran into the, um, push pumper, it actually tilted it back into the hood of the squad, so we put a dent in that, and it actually cracked a little bit of the panel of the front, uh, shrouder, I guess you would call it, so got about a $2,200 claim there, and as Darren had told us, we've got a $1,000 deductible, so we'll be on the hook for a thousand, but for us to be covered under insurance, that'll go in here at the end of April to get fixed, so. And that's all I have, unless you have any other questions.
I got just a administrative question, so when someone is, when one of your officers applies somewhere else, let's say they, they want to keep it under wraps, they don't want to really tell anyone, when they do a background check, they inform you, like, Fergus Falls, someone applied there, they're going to, Fergus Falls is going to call you and say, "We're doing a background check on Johnny Ray." So you, you eventually find out, so it's probably, I don't even know how that works.
Most, most of my guys all, uh, call me and give me heads up that, you know, I, I'm in the running for this job, you're going to get contacted by, you know, such and such an agency, so, uh, so I usually, yes, I know well in advance, and... you know, such and such an agency. So, so usually, yes, I know well in advance and even if they don't, like I said, that is part of your backgrounding is to call the prior agency to find out anything you know about them. So.
All right, cool. Any other questions?
The resolution?
We have a resolution. Yes?
Yep, that page 19, Resolution 2021B. This is to add Jason L. Squires to the police and fire plan membership requirement because the state contacts us when we have to put somebody on there and the state did contact us and tell them that we, tell us that we needed to do this. So this is not anything that we do on our own. We do it when the state tells us to. So we need to approve this resolution.
I need a motion to approve Resolution number 2021B.
So moved.
Second.
And we have motion and a second to approve Resolution number 2021B. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time. Thank you, Bob. Onto public works, Kurt.
Evening, Mayor and Councilmember. Here are your streets. We, we've done our street sweeping for the spring already. It's picked up a lot of debris. And parks, we're getting ready to open them up. It's pretty cold out there yet, water and trees. But we're working with Dwyer as he gets his new toilets and the hand sanitizers and all that in there, then we'll open them up. There's a game out at West Park tonight from TCU varsity teams out there playing tonight. Sewers, the lift station at Roman Hills and on County Road 11, all have completed the alarm system in the floats and are ready to go. They've all been installed. The pumps are all set up for each particular site to pump if needed. And they're all ready to go. And refuse, the garbage keeps increasing. We've, so far for the month of March, compared to the totals of last year in March, we're up over 17 ton of garbage, more than last year this same time. So we're handling a lot of solid waste there. And the other thing on garbage is that Mr. Hartmeyer is going to get a ride in the garbage truck so that we can arrange it for him. It's up and running and we've, we've used it to haul a load of leaves already that we collected. We collected 10 ton of leaves since spring was here and so we haul that over with, with our garbage truck. Works really good. It looks nice, I think it does. And I, that's all I got. I've got some more on citywide cleanup when you get to that part, Mr. Hartmeyer.
Perfect.
But that's all I have right now.
Garbage truck looks nice.
Thank you.
Looks real nice.
She put it in a parade.
Any other questions for Kurt? Nothing. All right, let's move on to engineers report, Bolton May, Mr. Jacobs.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Project from last year has started up again. We've got two crews in town, Holmeyer does. They've been working on spores. We got the sanitary all in on spores. Pretty much all the water is, they just got to put in the hydrant. They will be starting a storm sewer tomorrow, Thursday, and that'll probably take about a week or two to get in on spores. The second crew, they're working on Waterville, spores to the north. All the water main is in. They started sanitary, they're about halfway up and it looks like they still got storm sewer put in on that block too. Looks like they're probably about two weeks out before they'll start subcutting it and then start bringing in the gravel for the roadway there. We did have a little bit of an issue with some residents who were saying that they got no notice on the, on the water shutdown that they did. That has been addressed with the contractor and I don't know if it was a, they put out the flyers and they blew away or is it what happened with the, with it? But like we said, we've addressed that with the contractor. So. That's about, all I got right now. Like I say, they're two weeks out on that on the street. The portions that were done last year, you know, with the seeding, that'll be, you know, kind of let it dry off a little bit more here and let the, the weather warm up where they'll get in and touch those up and then start seeding those. I mean, they do have some, some sidewalk to finish from last year also.
When you say touch, touching up what, dirt?
Yeah, it's coming back in. I mean, they kind of roughed it in last year and then they just did a, like a temp mulch on it just to satisfy the SWIP requirements that they gotta stabilize the site. So they'll come back in, kind of rework that dirt and then do their final seeding.
Looking, looking good. They're really working at it. I didn't think they'd be going at it on Monday, but they were up there.
Oh, yeah. Good to see progress.
Well, thank you, Adam. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the public forum. If you're here, we'd like you to state your name, keep any petitions, requests, comments, or communications from the general public to three minutes, three minutes. Anybody?
Yeah, I got something real quick.
Yes, sir.
Basically, it's a.
What's your, what's your name?
I'm Dwayne Swenson.
Dwayne Swenson.
I live on 365 East Woodlawn Street. I have, on Woodlawn Court, there is a large shrub.
And if I can show the picture? Yeah.
It was larger. I cut it down last year, but it grew back.
Okay.
And so what I'm asking is, I was going to have a contractor.
Let me take.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's in the easement, city easement.
Yep, yep, yep.
I was going to have a con, licensed contractor come in with a backhoe and dig it out. And then he actually hauled in a bunch of dirt already, but I wanted to get the council's permission to do this because it is in the city easement. Or any ideas? Kind of like to remove it and just have grass there.
Do we have any utilities there?
Utilities are on the, this is on the east side of the property. The only thing I know is a sewer which is in the street. Gas and electric and cable is all on the north side. I mean, the, the west, the west side. This is on the east side.
Have you had a locate done?
Yeah, I was going to say.
I did have a locate done.
Yeah.
I wanted to talk to the city council members before calling for a locate.
Legally, I don't, as long as that you take.
Legally, I mean, we just want to make sure that we don't have any utilities there, obviously. But if you give him permission to dig it up, he certainly can. He can't, he can't dig it up unless you give him permission.
Okay. Kurt, do you see any reason why that would be an issue?
No, I don't. Uh-uh.
Do you see?
Maybe you probably know about it or seen it. No, I've never seen it. First time I heard about it.
Okay.
That's right along Woodlawn Court? Oh, sure, yep. And it's grow, there's a big vine in there too and it's just, it's just a mess.
So you're, you're just going to dig it up and turn it to grass?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was a black nicer for them.
I wanted to just dig it up, remove it, tow it away, and then just put black dirt in there and seed it in.
I, I don't see why that would be an issue. Do we need a, a motion for him to do that?
Yeah, you should.
All right. Well, do we have a motion for Mr. Dwayne Swenson to take care of his easement there?
Do light excavation and the easement to remove the, to remove the dogwood? I make a motion to approve Mr. Swenson removing the dogwood and replacing it with dirt and seed, grass seed.
We have a second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time.
Thank you.
Just make sure you, make sure you do your locate first because if you hit anything, it's on you.
Yeah, I'll have the, the licensed contractor take care of that.
Thank you, Dwayne. Appreciate it. Anyone else? All right, going down to old business. Letter A there, we received the bids for possible rooftop and pave on the alley. Chris has contacted Mr. McGrath. Mr. McGrath has not come back in and approached Chris on this. So I believe we can.
I would say we do take no action on, on anything. There's nothing to.
Nothing to do.
Nothing to do on it.
Has this been sent out to the seven properties?
I called them. I have made copies for them all and I called Mr. McGrath and that, and the Manila, Manila Inn of Hope's been sitting there for a week. He didn't come in and get it. So.
Might as well. It is what it is.
Well, thanks for doing the legwork on it.
We'll.
Okay.
We'll have to deal with it hopefully next month and we can, you know, put it to bed one way or the other and be done with it.
Jason, is there a, is there a time limitation on, you know, losing like the bids on that?
Most of them are good for 30 days.
30 days, yep. So not even sure that prices are good anymore. So.
Yeah, I don't know.
Highly unlikely. This was done back in March.
Even before that, because I was gone in March.
Yeah.
Well, the date of the abstracts, if you want to call it that, is March 2.
So they were at the, yeah, looked at at the March meeting.
At this point in time, I think that we've done everything we can. It's really up to them from this point forward.
Correct. All right, I agree. All right, any other discussion? All right, going on to, let it be, city, new newspaper articles. Department head reminder for writing their articles and submitting them.
Yes.
So month of May, we have supposed to be swimming pool on here on this agenda. Or that for each department has to do something for this month.
Well, as you can see, going back to March, you know, we already are out of, out of order just trying to, because both of these two that the mayor wrote up and I wrote up for March and April were done like the morning of that they had to be turned in.
Okay.
But I'm not doing that every month. So.
No. So I was just thinking, so May, swimming pool, you're supposed to have a write-up, I'm assuming is what this means?
That's what it means.
Okay. So Colin, are you on that? That, that's part of your assignment, assignments, right? You have a.
Pool committee.
Who else is up on that?
Yes, I am.
I am.
You are? I don't know if you want to get together with Dorothy or talk, give her an email or something and talk with her on that and maybe come up with the happenings that are going to start coming up or something with that or what she sees. If, if, talk to her and see what she wants there as well.
Will do.
Does that sound good, Chris?
Yeah.
She has to have it in tomorrow?
No, 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 May.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
I think they publish them in the first, the first Wednesday of each month though. So whatever that is in May is when it would be, you know, four or five days ahead of that type thing.
Perfect. And you got, we got the email on top there too. So just sent that email, Chris?
Yep.
All right, old business, letter C, consider approving new 2021 city and school field lease agreement. This is something we approve every year, correct, Chris?
Yep.
Make the motion to approve the city school field lease agreement for.
We have a motion.
2021.
Sorry.
Second.
And a second. To approve the 2021 on Lee Center City and TCU School Field Lease Agreement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time. All right, approved. All right, D, discussion on holding a citywide junk throwaway again and a date. Kurt?
Yep, I contacted Waste Management and we've tentatively set up June 19th for the citywide cleanup. Same, the costs are the same as last year. Our, yeah, yeah, 20 that we did it. And we do it the same way, expect $25 per six by six area, I think it was. 10 foot by 10 foot area we had.
Okay.
Do exactly like we did last, last time.
Kurt?
Yep.
Did we want to push that later or no?
That's up to you guys. I called him and this is the date he had open.
And thank you for calling.
And we, we've always done it in the past. We've always done it in June. Every time Chris and I were down there, it got blew away.
Yeah. Yeah. The only reason I say, I say pushing it back a bit is one for the, for the residents up there on the north side of town with the construction going on. If anybody up there wants to, to partake in this, we don't really have anywhere for them to put it or them to bring their trucks through there. I don't know. That's just a thought I have on that. I know normally we do do it, we do have it in June. I don't know, any other discussion on that? Any other thoughts?
Would there be a place those residents could bring their refuse to?
Well, then you're getting into people just bringing it, seeing junk sitting there and just bringing their own junk there too.
No, I understand. I'm just trying to give them an option to.
No, I understand.
A lot of that street will be done in June, be done by June and they'll have a gravel driveways, I think.
Yeah, I think by June they would, spores, Waterville.
All done.
Those should be done. I mean, we're probably looking at our Bowler and they'd be working in that area.
Yeah, there's no houses on Bowler very much. They'll face the side streets.
I would say we move with the June 19th and do it as usual.
All right, we have a motion to have the, the citywide junk throwaway on June 19th.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time. All right, you. No, thank you, Kurt. Thank you for calling. Appreciate it. Onto new business. We need to consider the LC Chamber Special Event Permit kickoff to the summer, Thursday, May 20th. I believe last year this was canceled. Was it not, Chris?
I, yes, I think so.
Because of the COVID. Previous years, I know this has been a great turnout, obviously by many businesses and obviously many residents of the town and the kids, I know, love it. So. Again, this is on May, on Thursday, May 20th. Chris, do you have anything to say about it?
Nope, it's a chamber event. It's not my event.
I make a motion to approve the Chamber Special Event Permit for May 20th, the kickoff to summer.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the application for the LC Chamber Special Event on Thursday, May 20th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time. All right, new business B, consider approving the 2021 liquor and beer license renewals. Is there any new ones on here? I don't, doesn't look like it, Chris. Are there any new ones? Sorry.
Lee Center PTO might be.
On the top was, and it sounds like, I don't, I don't want to step out of line, but it sounds like that one may not happen, be held anyway. But we've already had the packet put out. So. And it doesn't hurt to have it approved if, maybe they, especially if they do end up going through with it.
Okay. All right, we need a motion?
Yep, I'll make a motion to approve the 2021 liquor license renewals.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the 2021 liquor license renewals. All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time. Approve it is. On to C, consider the request of the Public Library to place a movable bench in front of the building. Everybody has seen the letter here, looks like the Friends of the Lee Center Library would like to purchase an outdoor freestanding bench to be placed outside the library entrance on Park Avenue, so just right over here to the east side of the building here.
It would probably be, it'd look very similar to the one we probably, we have in front of our city hall here, except this one over at the library will not be bolted down like ours is, so it can be moved in and out, and they'll move it in, in, during the winter, so it'll be easier for us to plow through there. You remember there was a old planter that was there, that had, that they were, you know, had kept up and put flowers in and stuff like that, that got, that was a casualty of the street project, so there is quite a bit of room over there, now from their front door out to the curb, so it would be nice to have something there, and they're going to purchase themselves and stuff, so I don't see any problem with it. I need Kurt to talk, I don't think there's any problems with it, so.
I think it'll be nice for this.
Well, if you hook that with our two, it's, it's a little bare.
Yeah, it'll be in the right-of-way, so.
That's your right-of-way.
Do we need to vote on that again?
Yep.
Yes, so.
All right.
To allow, to allow the placement, the encroachment in the right-of-way.
So we're going to have to do two separate ones?
Nope.
I make a motion to allow the encroachment in the right-of-way for the movable bench that the Public Library is proposing to put there.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the movable bench in the encroachment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same time. All right, approved. Chris, you'll contact them on that, then?
Yep.
Thank you. All right, letter D, consider MetroNet contract, turn them around, you have floor on this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Council. MetroNet did submit a, what I would term memorandum of understanding on February twenty-two. Chris and I have been in contact with MetroNet about this. At this time, I'm going to ask that you take no action on this. They're going to be submitting a more formal franchise agreement, and we really do want a franchise agreement as opposed to a memorandum of understanding, because in the event that MetroNet takes some action that we are unhappy with, then we can look at revoking a franchise agreement. It's much easier to revoke a franchise agreement than it is to revoke a memorandum of understanding. There are also some provisions in this memorandum of understanding that they have proposed that we are unhappy with. First of all, we want free services for half of, well, we want half off on their services, city-sponsored services, they have agreed to that. We made that proposal a couple weeks ago, that will come in the franchise agreement. In addition to that, we also want them to pay right-of-way fees anytime they install anything in our right-of-way, and we want them to acquire right-of-way permits and work with Kurt in, in placing things in the right-of-way. So it gives us a little more power, I should, I should say it gives us a lot more power. So I anticipate that that'll be on its way and will be up for approval next month, hopefully. So take no action on it at this time.
No action on that?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
MetroNet is essentially Jaguar, they're, MetroNet bought Jaguar out, I don't know if you guys knew that or not, they did. Anybody have any questions on that? Certainly, if anyone does, if you know how to get me.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You bet.
All right. Letter D, we need to set a committee for city sewer and water utility rates. Chris?
We've been talking about doing this for a couple years, they definitely have to be looked at, they haven't been looked at, or, well, their last were raised in 2010, so they definitely need to be looked at and at least discussed. I was just thinking that for the committee, we only want two council people, so we don't have to notice our meeting. And Christian, Councilman Harmeyer is on the sewer and water appointment, and Jennifer Wires is on the public works appointment, so if you two would both agree to that, I thought maybe you two would meet, and Kurt, the four of us would meet, meet three, four, five times and look at what needs to be done or should be done with those, if you guys, if that's something that works, meet.
That'll work for me.
Four, four-thirty, five o'clock-ish, and that's.
Yep. Should be timed by me.
That's okay with you guys, okay?
Okay. All right. Moving on, Administration miscellaneous, A, next county officials' meeting is Wednesday, April twenty-eighth, this is going to be live and at the County Justice Center at 7:00 PM. I believe, obviously, that's all taken care of, Mayor, Mayor Frederickson has taken care of that and talked with the Sheriff, Sheriff Mason on that, too, so that's all taken care of. So that's for everybody to know. Chris, anything else?
No, no, nothing, I think we touched every day.
All right, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.